Just had two turkeys show up today, so.
Hi.
Yeah. Luckily my dog.
Go ahead and call meeting order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has been established, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes from the last meeting and the tax equalization meeting.
Make a motion to accept.
Do you move to approve? Is there a second? Not everybody approves.
I'll second.
Second by Mike. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item of business is the presentation of the bills. Is there any questions on the bills? Is there any missing bills? Should we have the list done this time?
We got it since I figured out what happened.
Do I have a motion to approve the bills?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved and seconded to approve the bills. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. City commissioners reports. We'll start with Paul.
Okay, I'm trying to go through real quick. On the beautification side, we'll probably just, and Levi can add on to this, right now we're probably just looking at how things have been over the winter and see what we have from last year's complaints, see if they've improved anything. On the HEDC side, they had a meeting last Monday. They approved a flex place loan for the Hillsborough Inn for remodeling. They also approved a childcare grant. HEDC has childcare grants. So they approved a childcare grant for the learning center or the daycare that's going to be going into the old Dakota Heritage Building. I believe that was five, right? Five thousand dollars. So those, so if you have a daycare, that's a good, good source of funding if you need to do some work. They also approved a $2,500 donation to the Hillsborough Business Association to help defray costs for the Hillsborough Days. They are still doing bingo at the brewery on Thursdays, and they're kind of getting close to the end on Sundays, but they are looking for help. So if there's anybody out there that likes to call bingo, bingo or do that kind of paperwork, they are looking for an employee or two for that. Electrical side, we're still working on the load control units. I think we're finally getting it, getting everybody on the same page as far as how they're gonna, how we're gonna do that to try and clean up some of those. We're gonna, we're trying to hope to do, do as many as we can on Mondays, and then if there is some over, some more, we might try to go into Tuesdays of each week. So if you're one of those people that haven't have that done, please call in. I was wondering if there's any way we could put some of that stuff on our webpage, on our website and on our social media, actually?
Yep.
So kind of shoot that out and maybe that might help remind somebody with phone numbers and if they have any questions, you can put my phone number in there too, so. Because it couldn't be as simple as if they can just contact me too if they don't want to call that, and we'll try and make arrangements to get people in there to get it done. We also started talks. We have, one of the things that were on our list from Missouri River when they did their inspection here a few years ago was updating some, some transclosures, is that the word they're called? Or trans, I don't know, around by the, one was by the city hall here and one was over by, by Millers. So we've kind of started talks with that. We met with the parties that would be involved with that and kind of talked the process through to make it the smoothest, the smoothest as we can, so. And the last thing, final thought, we, Levi had brought this up, we're talking about, we may, we have to start looking if we're interested in doing alignment, and maybe he can elaborate more on that. So I want everybody to kind of keep that in mind, what we can do for that moving forward. We still have Barnesville and ODAC that, that will help us, so we're not in any bind right now for that, but I think he's looking more for the long term. If we can make that work financially, I think that would be a good idea. And that's all I have.
Mike?
Nothing tonight.
Dave?
Well, the only thing I have is the sheriff's department is going to be turning the, the police pickup over the fire department, probably a couple of weeks or so, and we'll get the title and get that all taken care of. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Nicole?
Um, I have nothing on water or sewer, but we have $12,133.89 in the fund for lodging tax, so there will be a meeting tomorrow at 5:30 at the vets club to go over on what we can spend those funds on. And that's all I have.
On a good note, we did not, the pool did not flood, so that's, that's a good thing. On a bad note, we haven't secured a pool manager yet, so we don't know what that will entail yet. Keep an open mind, because we may have to look at different aspects of how we, if we keep it open this year and how we're going to.
Can you speak up, please?
I said the pool will, doesn't have a pool manager at this time. And so we may have to look at different aspects of what we're going to do or how we're going to do it, so. We'll kind of go from there. With that, we may have to change things just a little bit on how we normally are, how we've done it in the past. We may change dates or we may change whatever, but I'm still working, trying to find somebody. So we'll go with that.
We have that listed, right, Levi?
We have not listed it. I may do that. That'll probably be my next step. There was some individuals that had expressed interest. I had tried to do that first just to see if there was interest, and there was a few people that I was told to reach out to, and so reached out to them just to see what their thoughts were and kind of go from there before we made any big decisions on which way to go. But I probably will be posting or doing something here in the next week or two to get it going. As far as what Paul was talking about with the electrical alignment, I know we had talked about it before, and so I brought up, you know, on the long term, what do we need to do to make sure that we can secure somebody? There was a rumor going around that the ODAC electric facility here in town would be shutting down or closing. And if you guys know me, I'm not gonna tiptoe around. I went to the top and found out what was going on, and they're talking about it. It is not necessarily that they're closing the facility, it's their may realignment of that. So Jim and I talked about it a little bit, and when they're done with their realignment and they figure things out, then Paul and myself and probably Jim will sit down with them and figure out if we need to have a bigger partnership or not. And how we're going to look at that in the future. The, what I had mentioned on alignment is whether or not you guys want to advertise, which I did. Nicole has the handbook that I had worked on. I sent it to her and JR just to give an overdraft so they didn't send out anything too wild and crazy, because they haven't had a chance to completely look at it before I'd send it out to all of you, but that was one thing that I added in, was looking at those type of things in there. It was put in the budget for this year. If things go as it should, that we could handle hiring, one, I don't remember the exact price, and that's with if, depending on if and when Jim B was planning to retire. We had heard that at one time. Has he said anything, or?
Yeah, June 28th is his last date.
July. June, July, last week.
June, July, July 28th. They're just taking, I'll, I'll be in there.
Okay. So that is, you know, if we want to look at something at that position. And... We had also talked about, you know, do we want to work with somebody within and send somebody out? I'm not saying that we get rid of everybody, but it's hard enough finding enough for the other places, and when we need help, is it always there when we need it? And Jim seems to be having issues sometimes securing, or some companies aren't doing it anymore, so at that point, do we need to look at adding some more here? I think overall, it would be fine for us to do that if we want to. It would cost more for the employees, but on the other side, you're saving on those charges when they're coming in on midnight or 10 o'clock at night or whenever it is, so.
Can one work, can one lineman work by himself?
No.
No, but that's where if we looked at hiring them, hire linemen or master linemen or master electrician, and then seeing if we had anybody here that would be interested in going to school or working towards it. I think if we did the same structure, and that's kind of how I did it, where we looked at the water treatment operators is if you incentivize them or they will, they go and do some of those things, and with that, do we then say, if you're going to do this, you need to stick around for X amount of years if we're going to have you do this, just so we're not stuck. Get them trained and then a year they're gone. So something to think about, it's not a decision you guys have to make tonight, but it is something that we need to think about for the future, and said we can't keep always doing it the way we've done it because it may not work. Times are changing, so. On the beautification, May 10th is supposed to be the date that we'd be on court, I believe. Yep. May 10th. And then we will have a meeting next Monday, which will be talking about some other properties that came up. We'll kind of go from there and let you guys know how that proceeds. I haven't had a chance to talk to Ashley about this, but I think at least for one, and maybe we want to do them both at the same time, for our two employees that are retiring, we should be doing something for them.
Yeah, we've been, so Sarah and I have been talking. Julie says she doesn't want anything, but I talked to Julie's daughter and she told us to just, we need to put something on the calendar and tell her we're going to be there. So we were looking at that today. But I don't know if we want to do them separately or to, probably do them separately since they're at separate times. We've thought something at the, maybe something at the community center, like towards the end of the day. It can be, probably not on a weekend because everybody wants to go to the lake on Friday, but maybe a Wednesday or something where there's usually not sports activities because then Julie has kids or grandkids in sports. Sarah and I both have kids in sports, so whatever works for everybody.
Thoughts?
Just plan something. You can't, you know, you can't work around everybody, so.
Nope. Okay. Work on something then. That is all I have. Jim?
Both summer helpers will be back this summer. They'll be starting May 15th, both Landon and Greggy. I see a cleanup is on the agenda. Maybe I should just do that. We've been out, went out to landfill and there was still snow there as of last week, and we need to let it dry. Everything's been pushed back two, three weeks because of the weather, so we're looking at May 15th also, cleanup days. We're hoping, we, we're behind on flushing too. We're hoping to do that next week, so. So that's kind of tentative plan with May 15th.
Have everything off by 7:00 AM on May 15th?
Yes, on May 15th. And that, that'll help too. Those guys will be here, so we'll have that extra help. It shouldn't take us long. And you guys talked about lineman. There is a, there is a program on, in Minnesota, at Marshall, Minnesota, that will, it's a training course, and they will take present municipal employees and they'll train them. It's, it's over several years, but that's something we can look at in the future too. If we, if we have somebody in house that is interested in it and would like to go with that, so just for the future. And then Jim's leaving June 20, July 20?
That's what told me.
Yeah. July 28th, and he's taking his vacation during that period, so he'll basically, he'll be, only be here for six weeks in the next few months. So that being said, I'd like to advertise for a position for an employee to fill his spot. And I guess the positive thing is you might have somebody that takes his spot that might be interested in that training also, so. But we do need that spot filled. I can't be without another guy in the, in the shop and on the street.
I believe we're already budgeted for that, aren't we?
Correct.
Make the motion.
Moved by Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul to looking at positions for public works. Is there any discussion? And then the start date, I assume would be June 15th, June 1st, somewhere in there.
I'd like to, would be nice to have him in there, June if they were available, first to June.
Any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
And that's all I have.
So Jim, we did talk about, or I did put in the budget for a third summer guy for you.
Yes.
Just because we knew that we were adding West and a few other things. Is that something that we still want to do? Is that something you could use?
So for you guys, I guess we can try, I mean, I would assume especially with Jim leaving or being gone a lot, you know, he takes care of a lot of the mowing. We only have two mowers, but yeah, I guess we could try. If the pool's not going to be open, there might be some kids that are not working there that would like, so. And worst case scenario, I send them home. If we get a bad weather day or something, we just send them home, so. It seems like that. I guess it's up to you guys if you want.
Right. If so, we just need a motion to do that.
We'll advertise, yeah, see if we get.
Should we put in for a part-time one for the summer, or?
That's what we're saying, a separate, part-time summer.
And those, those guys have been here, this will be their third year, and they're, they're getting at that point where they're probably moving on, and so it would be odd, it would be beneficial to have somebody in here that's new that there is a schedule, so let me return next year.
Great. Thoughts? Mike, I feel like you have something.
As long as you can keep, think you can keep somebody busy, I'll try. I mean, it's like, it's like other days, you could use three more guys in those days and be all those, so.
I don't know the exact date, but at some point this summer, we'll be taking over the Riverwalk maintenance. So that was part of the thinking of it.
Yeah.
Anybody like to make a motion to allow for a third summer employee?
That'd be part-time then?
Part-time.
Part-time. I'll make the motion.
Who would have part-time?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. JR?
Just the agenda.
Okay. Ashley?
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Um, the county, I saw in the paper, they've changed their summer hours. They're doing, for the summer, they're going to do four 10s. They are starting at 7:00 AM and going to 5:30 PM with a half hour lunch, and then they get all of Friday off. I talked to Sarah, and if we decide to go that route, all that we would ask is can we do 6:30 to 5:00 instead? Both her and I are early risers. We'd rather work early. We get more done in the morning than staying that late. Or we can keep it as we normally do, which is Monday through Thursday, 7:00 to 4:30, and then Fridays, 8:00 to noon.
Would you continue the Wednesday afternoons off?
We did last year.
But that wasn't.
We're still working the same amount of hours. We still would like some time to have time to catch up.
That's not, that's not the, it's the, it's one less day that the office is open.
But we're working the same amount of hours. We're not working any less hours. The office wouldn't be open any less hours to the citizens. It would just be four 10s instead of five eights.
I guess my feeling is, is if you want to keep the Wednesdays off, that we go with the schedule that we did before last summer. Anybody else's feelings?
What did we do last year? Just refresh my memory.
Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 4:30 with a half hour lunch, and then Fridays, 8:00 to noon.
And now you want?
It doesn't matter to us. I'm just saying what the county went with is four 10s. So they're going to be working, they're going to work 7:00 to 5, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM with a half hour lunch. The only difference that we would ask is we could, if we could start at 6:30 instead of 7:00 and be done at 5:00 instead of 5:30, if we do that way. And then Fridays off.
I, I support doing it the way we did it last year. They open on Friday morning, anyway.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to us. We talked about it either way.
Any other thoughts? Keep it the way it was last year.
Okay. Do we need a motion or anything? Okay. And then we've gotten a lot of questions about when the special assessment committee for Riverwalk is going to be meeting. Any ideas on that?
JR has yet to get back to me, but John and I.
I responded earlier today in the late afternoon.
Oh, that's probably why I didn't see it.
Yep.
So I'm working to see JR's and John's visuals. I was waiting to hear back on the board.
Okay.
As soon as that is done, then that'll be set for the first meeting.
Okay. And then a few of us got letters, so our dental, this is kind of an FYI and to think ahead, since we already renewed our dental policy for this year, our local dental office will no longer be accepting our insurance that we have. Not just ours, like they, they sent out letters to several different businesses. There's two different kinds that they're no longer going to be submitting for. So we can still get reimbursement, it's just you've got to pay out of pocket for, at the dental office for that. And then if you want to submit a claim to our insurance yourselves, then we can. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. I can't remember when the effective date of that was.
I think probably immediately.
Okay. And then, um.
First of June or first of July.
So just if, next year, if we want to look at something that he does accept, or just giving a heads up about that. Because we already signed, we'd have to find that out.
What two did he drop?
He's dropped.
Blue Cross Blue Shield and.
Concordia.
Concordia something.
Bloom or something.
He will still submit your paperwork for you, but you have to pay him, he'll bill you directly, and then you have to work with the insurance company. But he'll, he'll do the paperwork for you, is what he told me.
Okay.
So, but it's still, it's kind of. You pay more out of pocket. At least that's how it worked for us.
Probably check and see where he'll take next year.
Because he's dropped already a couple, because he dropped the school a couple years ago. He's dropped some policies. I'm not sure what's up.
Delta Dental still, he still takes that one, I know. That's all I got.
He doesn't, he's got trouble with Delta Dental. Did you say Delta?
Yeah, because that's.
He's having some issues with that too.
I do know he still takes it because that's what Brandon has.
They have it, but it's still, you have to pay more.
Maybe, but I mean, Brandon doesn't have to submit anything himself. That's all I got.
Okay. Each of you have a packet from the sheriff's office for last month. I don't know if we have anything from the city engineer that I'm aware of. And there's no changes on the beautification. So the next item would be the second reading of organs on Lot 6, Block 5, the replata amendment of Kingman Edition, less the tracks of the 200 block of Le Forest Street. This would be for a second reading to change that from a R2 to a C1.
I'll make the motion. To do the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Mike for a second reading. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Then a no for me. Motion carries. We had the other plot. Did anybody reach out to them and finalize what they would like?
She said that it was a miscommunication and she doesn't want to at this time.
Um, the policy handbook, hopefully we can have that to you guys for the next meeting. Hopefully JR and Nicole have a few, a little bit of time to look at it, and then we'll send, I'll send it out to all of you with the changes that were in there. Admin assistant position, we were holding off on that till we got done with the policy book, but I don't know if you guys want to wait. Is that long or not?
Yeah, Julie's done. The third first. I, if you guys wait, I would just ask that I'd be able to ask Candy to come in and help with phones. Would be my request, if, if you wait. Or we can post it. I'm, we're, it's up to you guys, but one, I, I need somebody to, in there to answer the phones, because Sarah's still learning.
It's going to take a couple of weeks. You're going to post it for a couple of weeks, I suppose, so we're going to be into the next meeting, so.
Yeah, I'll see why we don't, you know, post for that.
Okay. I have a motion to approve posting for that position.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Nicole.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike.
Seconded by Mike to post for the administrative position. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Uh, copy your quotes. You guys should have got the last one today. And Ashley, you said we're still good till the end of the year, correct?
Yep.
I wonder if it may be the best interest just to hold off till the next budget season. If you guys are okay with that.
Yeah. Uh, they're still servicing it, so, as long as they continue to service it and it doesn't completely die. If it completely dies, then I might ask for a request.
Then we return to the subject.
Okay.
If it quits.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that sound agreeable to everybody?
Yeah.
So table till like October, November?
Uh, August, budget season. Yeah, as long as you get it in the budget.
I was thinking like when the budget was due, that'd be October, but we can do August.
No, they gotta put it in the budget, so.
I, okay, until August.
All right, uh, the gaming site authorization for the Aggie Foundation, I tapped that. I believe that's where the re-roll, correct?
Yep.
I'll make the motion. Dave makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike to approve. Is there any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next item in business is the farmer's market. Street closures, uh, Thursdays, January, or June to September. Paul, I think you're here to talk about that tonight. Come up and turn the mic on and- Is it okay if I don't use a mic? I can s- I can speak up. Uh, well, we like the mic, cause it goes for the recording, so just make sure it's turned on. The red light is on, then it's on, or if the-
Blue light.
The blue light is on.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so the idea of the street closures is, uh, too full. Um, it kind of, uh, it protects any of the, uh, customers from walking from one vendor to another. Uh, cause we're gonna have the vendors scattered out. Um, ma- mainly isolated over here at Chatham Railroad Park. The idea is to, to highlight Railroad Park. Um, and then if we have an abundance of vendors, extend it over to the other side of Main Street. Um, between, uh, Sunday Brew, Three R, and Hillsborough Cafe. Um, uh, and then the other part of the street closure is, so then that way, produce vendors, uh, we've been to a lot of, of farmer's markets where produce vendors like to back up to their booth. Um, this allows them to, uh, have access to back up to those areas so they can refill their booth straight from their truck. Cause they, they do hold a lot of produce on their trucks. Um, craft vendors, it's a little bit easier. They tote everything around, but produce vendors are, are remain in line for, uh, being able to get access.
Which streets are you gonna use?
Uh, it would be Main Street. We already talked to, um, Tony over at Tap That, so we put the barricade over. Um, he didn't care if it's, if it's before or after, to the north or south of Tap That. And then we all, uh, it would go to the stop sign at Caledonia. And then on the other side of Caledonia, it would be from the stop sign to the other side of Sunday Brew. This way, it kind of isolates foot traffic and people can go all the way over to Sunday Brew as well.
And that's every Thursday you're planning?
Uh, we're planning for every Thursday, yes, from June first and the last Thursday of September is September twenty eighth.
And then, so you're planning from four thirty, seven thirty, so I assume you want it blocked from four to eight?
It would be from four to eight, yes. And then we already have in the, uh, uh, market guidelines that all vendors are to vacate by eight o'clock. And that they, uh, can start setting up, um, four fifteen. Once all the barricades are in place, they can start, uh, setting up at four fifteen and they start sales at that rate.
And would you guys have people available to put the barricades up that way? Cause I assume that our guy, our guys are done at three thirty.
Uh, we-
As long as we provide them to you?
Uh, we, we were waiting until this meeting, until we start putting out there that we're looking for volunteers for, uh, for the barricades. Uh, because the idea is that we, we look for a volunteer to, um, pretty much man those barricades through those three hours. Or at least monitor the barricades.
But you guys would be willing to find somebody to take care of it?
Uh, uh, yes, yes. We, we will put that out, uh, via social media and, and other networks.
And then do you plan to need any power or anything that we would have to?
Um, in the guidelines, we stated that power is limited, so, um, if, if any vendors need, uh, power to let us know. We know that out here, it's, there's not very many, or very much power access. So we, uh, put that directly in the guidelines to try to be self-sufficient. Um, if, uh, we know that if there's any food trucks, uh, so Truck and Good Food or Cruisin' Cafe, if they come along or any other food trucks, um, that generators, uh, we took generators out of the guidelines, so generators are approved. So basically, the idea is to try to be as self-sufficient as the vendor can. Um, and if they absolutely need power, um, to let us know. Uh, I think the, the main vendors that would probably need power, if they can't or don't have the ability, the ability to already, is those that sub eggs for refrigeration purposes.
Cause I think the only things we have is over on that one pool by the-
Yeah, there's nothing on the north side of the, uh, Hill, on the avenue. Um, and on the north end here, there's some of them that I haven't, I haven't looked at. I don't know how shaped they're in, but, uh-
They were enough to run Christmas lights last. I never, but that was about it.
And, and worst case scenario, if, uh, we do have an abundance of vendors and it does lead to the north side of Main Street, of, on the other side of Caledonia, um, we could run extended cords out of Hillsborough Cafe, no problem. So it would just be a matter of how many vendors we have, but like I said, the, uh, the guidelines stated to try to be as self-sufficient as possible.
Did you put in the notes too that all the food trucks and stuff do, need to come and get a permit from the city?
Uh, I believe so. Um, I know that there, for liquor as well, and I've been talking to JR about the ordinance for liquor. Um, but that there needs to be going through, uh, the city for, um, any, any special licenses and everything, so. Um, I'll gather that information and when we do get food trucks, we'll send out that information to the food trucks.
Are you thinking on liquor or?
Wineries, siaries, breweries, like the samples they give in that sense, which we do have milk licenses, not liquor per se, so.
It, it wouldn't be like a beer garden. It would be tasting, and all these vendors have gone to Friday Dakota shows as well as other, um, farmer's markets. So they're, they're well aware of state and city ordinances and following, following those guidelines.
Our city ordinance, I actually base it off the state guidelines too. So just for clarification, those, I've already informed them, but those that do wanna do that process will have to get a permit through the city. So, we'll hear about it again if it doesn't happen.
We do have one distillery so far, um, and we're reaching out to other breweries, siaries, wineries.
Facilities or restaurants, that kind of stuff, are you guys planning anything for that?
Uh, it was brought up briefly, um, if we need to do any type of, um, um, like portions. Um, my guess is that if there is foot traffic through open businesses, through Tap That and Sunday Brew, um, I would have to talk to those business owners to see if that's acceptable. Otherwise, there would have to be planning for some sort of, uh, porting access.
Are you planning for any alternative if there's bad weather, anything that, using this facility or something else?
Um, we stated in the guidelines that we're gonna open, we're gonna be open, uh, rain, rain, whatever type of, uh, weather. Um, unless if it's like very implement weather, like tornado, then we will cancel in that time. Um, and then as well as if there's any projects that's happening on Main Street. Um, example being if they start a fence over at Railroad Park. Uh, that was kind of the idea of the name, um, between two cities instead of Main Street Market. Uh, so then that way, we can move it anywhere within Hillsborough and still maintain the market setting. Cause if we had, if we did Main Street Market, then it would be misleading if we hadn't, so that's why we chose between two cities.
Can I see a music plan for the first one? Are you planning any of those type of things besides that, just so that?
Um, it is, it is very dependent on the market. Um, trying to, trying to make this, or push this as, as successful as possible. Um, uh, right now, we do have just, uh, Jessica Vines for June first to kick off the market. Depending how big it gets, maybe we might go first Thursdays of the month. Um, and then maybe in the future, uh, maybe next year, two years, three years down the road, might be able to do music every Thursday, depending how big this gets. The idea is, uh, again, to try to support local and get as many local vendors as we can, so it's all dependent on how many vendors we get.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I only have one, but I don't think he can answer that. Is that the, for the Thursday for the Hillsborough Days, that won't affect the runners of the five K for the path rate?
Nope.
Okay.
The path goes from the park, uh, but it has church, bathroom, post road and-
Okay, I thought so.
You might reconsider porta potties.
Wha- uh, what was that?
You might wanna reconsider some porta potties though. Chuck, did you have a question?
Just a brief question. Hey, I don't afford this, uh, farmer's market. Don't get me wrong here, but, uh, uh, somebody out by a vendor's pitch falls, breaks their leg, who's liable? Who's gonna have liability insurance on this thing?
Um, so it, it does say there in the guidelines that, uh, vendors are not, um, required, but they're encouraged to carry their own, um, uh, liability coverage insurance.
And likewise, you're gonna talk to part of the railroad here, if Amtrak doesn't come through at that time, I know. But trains do come through and if a, unfortunately, a four-year-old kid would get in the way, you know, they're not just gonna walk away from it, say, uh, just so you're covered on it, because I, I think the market is a great deal, but there is liability out there.
Correct. Um, it does, it does say, uh, that vendors do release any, um, form of liability to the city, uh, the market and those parties that are involved in setting up the market. But I do see your concern on, not from a vendor's perspective, but from the market or a city perspective, so. We'll have to, we'll have to talk about it.
Can you buy event insurance through the city? And is there, is there any kind of insurance available through the city?
Not that I'm aware of. The only insurance that we cover is for certain events.
Right.
But that is a pass through where we- Like the tractor pull. Right, we may, we cover it, but then the difference is paid by the, the group.
My point being, on the liability claim, the insurance company goes to where the money is. They aren't gonna worry about me as a cucumber vendor out here, uh, they're gonna go after the big dog. But as long as you got it covered, I'm all for that, but, uh, it's just something to be aware of.
We'll reach out to our insurance just to-
And if need be, it does say in the guidelines that, um, any proceeds that we receive from, from, uh, vendor registrations is used towards supporting the market, expanding the market, and then, um, like promotions, uh, advertising, stuff like that. So, we can include in there, uh, to cover liability insurance.
Sounds like a good deal.
Um, and then one other thing is we have been in contact with, uh, uh, Cody, um, Arstad from the park board. Uh, the idea is to, um, try to, whatever is left towards the end of the year, um, we'll talk about contributing that to expanding, um, Hillsborough community projects through park board or whatnot.
Could also be used to help improve Railroad Park.
And that's what I talked to, uh, Paul about, was that, um, we wanna put up a fence at Railroad Park, but, uh, I've heard that, uh, the funds are limited. So the idea of the farmer's market is then that the funds that we raise from, uh, selling t-shirts, hats, reusable bags, and that any vendor registration, some of those proceeds can then be used towards the fence. So then that way, accidents can be prevented for future matters.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, then we need a motion to approve the closing. Did you have a question?
Usually, if you go to an auction sale or a flea market type thing, you assume your own liability. So, if I went to the, your thing on, I fell and broke my leg, it's my responsibility for my broken leg. If I wanna sue somebody, I can, but I'm assuming my own liability.
You would have to have everybody sign a release that comes in the farmer's market.
Yeah, I, I know Susie's got a good point there, but I can remember back a number of years ago at the plumber house, open house deal, a lady fell and broke whatever, and, uh, it was selling for fifty dollars, so. Uh, there is liability with what you can do.
We'll, we'll definitely look into that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to close the streets for their, um, farmer's market.
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, HBA Hillsborough Days request?
So I'm gonna wear a different hat right now, and as HBA president, we do have a few requests. Um, to start with, the first one is also street closures during Hillsborough Days where the tent goes in front of the post office. We would like to close that area from Thursday morning to Monday evening. For Thursday, we put the tent up, Monday we take it down. And then on Friday of Hillsborough Days, we close the two business areas here in Main Street. Uh, you know, north and south Main Street, as we usually do for the kids' pedal pull and then the, uh, car show on the south side here. And that would be from roughly three to, say, eight o'clock. Just say three o'clock, because you know if we don't get the barricades up, before five, people keep parking there. It gets very difficult, especially with the pedal pull. So, we say three o'clock if we can. Consider that request number one, if you'd like to discuss.
Would you like to hear all their requests, or would you like to do? Motion on the first request.
The second request is that we do do insurance coverage for the dance. Um, generally, that's just, as we just talked about, it's actually pass through. Each year, the city covers it. They've talked to the insurance agent and then HBA pays for it. So if we could also be included on that once more.
And tractor pull, don't we?
Yes, and the tractor pull pays for their own, but yes.
That, that's a separate request.
Sorry, okay.
Yep.
Which we should also reach out to, um, the running club affair. Which we should also reach out to um the Running Club if they're.
I was gonna say, I know the Running Club intends to have their race this year, they told me nothing other than if you'd like to include that in the request, if they may do so, I'm sure they'd appreciate me doing their footwork. I believe they even mentioned that they're gonna do a kids' run this year or some other slight change to it, so the runners at the table are nodding their heads.
The Bio Girls is doing it, right, prior?
Uh if the kids run with the Bio Girls, would you participate?
It's at the same time.
It's open to all kids.
Is it at the same time?
It's before.
Six thirty, I think, is what my email said. Final request is for money, so if you wanna consider that one separately, get the easies out of the way.
That one might not get that.
Well, that's why we'll tie that one second.
Okay, so we have a request for the street closures on Thursday to Monday evening in front of the post office. That'd be first northwest on the one hundred block, and then Main Street on Friday, or Thursday and Friday from three A.
Just Friday.
Just Friday.
Well, they got it for Thursday, we'll take it for Friday. So.
I'll also make the motion. Does that include the street closures for the?
Yes.
For run?
Yep.
And the insurance for the dance?
And the insurance?
Yes.
Is there a second? You have a request.
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Mike. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
I'm gonna abstain because I'm kind of on the.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And a yes for me, motion carries. Your second.
Okay, so the.
Third request, whatever it is.
The next request, I lost count. Uh as part of Hillsborough Days, I I think you're all aware that it's mostly funded by the businesses, which are member organizations, as well as donations from member organizations and businesses, as well as outside businesses. Uh we, we're basically completely volunteer-based, and we have those donations. We're always looking for ways to get funding, um and with the recent economic turn, as we'll say it, it gets harder and harder to ask businesses to help support Hillsborough Days. I just checked the budget spreadsheet we have right now, we're looking to run five thousand at the whole this year. Not to say we can't put it on, I'm just saying that we're running at a deficit until we get donations. I will note that HEDC decided to contribute two thousand five hundred dollars at their meeting on Monday. And so we were wondering if the city would like to also engage in helping spur economic growth and business development and vitality in Hillsboro by sponsoring Hillsborough Days in an economic fashion.
And I'll add onto that, that we, we are looking at doing some, some more, getting some sides for the tent and some other, some other amenities that we can use for the dance and things like that. And that's kind of what we're looking to ask for, is something to kind of help pay for those amenities, you know, so.
Of those amenities, I can note, another thing we're looking at is for the tent, we're gonna get some, I'll call it patio lighting, and then the correct person will correct me what they're actually called, but lights to hang in the tents, to have some illumination in there. The sidewalls, we're looking at getting some, what I'll call cocktail tables, but just different things to set up. As part of Hillsborough Days, we're hoping to have doing pianos on Friday night this year, and so we would like to have different areas for people to stand, which won't just be used for Hillsborough Days, they could be used for weddings, other events in the city. And so this comes at financial cost to HBA, I think just to quote for the lights and tables I was looking at is around one thousand two hundred dollars. So add that to the deficit, that's not, that's not factored in yet.
No, JR, we can't donate, correct? How can the city help? Because we can't technically donate, won't we have to either choose something to buy or pay for? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Cause we did help, we did help pay for part of the tent.
Yes, we did.
Right.
Yes, yep, yep.
So it could go the same way, cause I know for the tent sidewalls, I can't remember what the quote was for that.
They're, they're gonna be around a thousand dollars for that too, so.
Soon, shipping, yeah.
And how soon do we answer on that?
Um we can talk about tomorrow, we might ask for more money tomorrow too, so.
Okay.
But like I said, that's what the numbers are playing with.
Yes.
We're spending money, I'll go as a community here, so if the city had funds to help pay for the sidewalls of the tent or the cocktail tables, the city will get more use out of them, HBA will, we're just trying to tap on the local sources. And after speaking with other economic developers, the cities usually contribute to the events like this, if not, they're the main sponsor in one way or another.
I think the last time, I think, didn't we take it out of the sales tax, because that's pretty much what's, that's the use for it.
We just, I just need to know like what to put it towards, I can't put donation in the comments, or that'll get flagged on the audit.
Right, yeah, I understand, yeah. It's probably better if we pay for it.
Correct, that's usually the best way.
Yeah. I just know what we're paying for.
I would suggest if JR, if you guys can come up with a specific, we want this, this, and this.
Sidewalls, we want cocktail tables, and we want patio lights. Those are the three. The sidewalls are priced in quotes, or the tables.
Sidewalls, patio tables, and lights.
And the.
And those run about how much total?
Sidewalls of the tents are anywhere from a thousand to thirteen hundred, I'll give a range, we have to get the tax and shipping.
There's no tax if the city's on.
Correct, uh so that'd just be the shipping cost there. The tables and lights, I was looking at Walmart and Sam's Club for local, there's no local vendor for them. The tables were costing around eight hundred and fifty, the lights, because of how many strands we have to get, was around four hundred, or three fifty. Twelve hundred we covered, is what I'm getting at, that's how the numbers scale.
So about twenty-five hundred.
Correct.
Do we have a motion if you still choose to do that?
I would like to see us do it.
Okay, is that a motion, Mike?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, moved by Mike, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion?
How much money?
Up to twenty-five hundred. Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul, I assume you're standing. And a yes for me, motion carries.
Thank you very much, thank you.
We'll probably, actually, we'll probably do it the same way we did the tent, if that'll work for you.
Yeah.
Okay, citywide cleanup, we are planning May fifteenth, correct Jim?
Yes.
So everything needs to be out on the streets by the morning of May fifteenth.
Seventeen.
Seven AM. Do we make a motion for that generally, or we just go with it?
No, I think we just.
Yeah, I think we just.
All right, last item on new business is the twenty twenty-three Missouri River Reserve Capacity Agreement, we need to renew that. We need a motion to approve that. Good news, it does increase.
I'll make a motion to prove that as long as JR doesn't have any concerns, or Jim?
No concerns from my end, I would refer to Jim on any technical.
I don't, I don't see it as normal procedure.
So I'll make a motion, do that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave. Is there any other discussion to approve that? Mike?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And a yes for me, motion carries. Is there any other new business we maybe missed? If you wanna come up to the mic.
I was wondering if there's any way through the summer months, I've talked to Jim, I've talked to ladies at the city, if we could extend or change the hours that the gate is open, where we can dump stuff at. Seven o'clock in the morning till three thirty in the afternoon. Farm, when I farm, I get home later than that, but the normal person works eight to five, or you like to come and clean your garage, clean your yard, do whatever, the gate ain't open. Saturday, the gates open from what, eight in the morning till?
Three, four in the afternoon.
Three, four in the afternoon, okay, that's fine, but Sunday, when a lot of people don't work at all and they wanna clean, the gate ain't open. Is there any way through the summer months, we can adjust or change that, you know, their excuse was, well, people rob from stuff from there. Well, if you got stuff that valuable, put it in your building, so people don't steal it. Number two, they say people don't put stuff in the right dumpster, and out of town residents, put up a camera. You know, their hours, their hours at the city don't jive with the normal working person or whatever schedules. And Sunday, you know, it's nice to clean your yard, clean your garage. It'd be really nice if they could change hours on that, on that gate, so we couldn't beautify our city and clean up our yards and do whatever. Them hours just don't work for the common working person. I don't think anything they can, you know, there's somebody on call every night or every weekend.
Oh, Jim and I will talk about it and see what we can do. Jim and I can talk about it and.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Jim about it, but I'm in the process of remodeling a house, cleaning up stuff, doing whatever, and I haven't come in pre-work in the morning. So I have to get up at five thirty, six o'clock, go to my trailer, put down my trailer. It'd be nice if I could work, I'll work at five o'clock, and I could go down my trailer, hours Sunday.
Hey, is that in town?
Yeah, I live, I own property in town.
But do you have a building permit for that, cause I don't recall?
I'm, I'm just, I'm not re, I'm just living on my house, I'm not, I'm not building that.
Yeah, but you said remodeling and that's.
Well, not remodeling, but normal household, how, normal household yard cleanup. I mean, if I, you know, there's, there's, your hours just don't work for the normal working person.
But are you ripping out sheetrock?
Huh?
Are you ripping out sheetrock or anything like that?
I'm not ripping out sheetrock.
Okay, I'm just asking, cause you had said.
I know, I know what I can do and can't do.
I was just asking to make sure that we had a building permit if you were actually working on it.
Not remodeling.
Okay.
But I mean, you guys could talk about it or whatever, but it'd be nice if, if we could change the hours a little bit, or if you think people are doing whatever, put a camera on. So that's all I gotta say, can do.
I did offer to Frank that we would make exceptions and be able to get him in there, and I, I remember your comment was, well, I don't wanna bother you, but you still are asking someone to come out at seven o'clock or on Sunday to open and close the gate and monitor what's going on.
Is there somebody on call every night, every day?
Not every night, no.
Well, then alter somebody's hours, let it leave fifteen minutes earlier, half an hour early to lock the gate.
Okay. To me, it's been working fine all these years, we've been able to make arrangements.
It ain't, it ain't just me.
Okay.
It ain't just me.
You're the only one I've heard from lately, so.
But it would, it would be nice if it was changed.
We'll take it into consideration and I'll work with Jim on it.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Chuck? Before I forget, um everybody, I said I was gonna sign it if there was no issues, so besides that one change on the audit agreement, everybody was okay with that?
Um, a couple of quick things, uh Frank, I know Jim didn't like it, but brought up a good point. Not everybody has availability up like me, where I can get in there anytime I want, when they're open. Uh but a lot of work is done on the weekends, and I can't see where you can't delegate an individual at random that works there once every other week or whatever, let him take a half hour off during the damn day and uh. He's gotta go and open it up and then shut it up, but that's for you to decide, uh that's a pretty big issue, otherwise, uh. Quick synopsis, I'm following up on what's going on in town, the brewery, they're gonna put up their fence. That was a major issue a year ago, and they had to put up a fence to have that outdoor patio. They hung up a little chain, now they took down all the chain, but about six feet. I remember about fifteen years ago, the city wouldn't even let a guy serve beer because he didn't have a closed fence, they made him do that. So let's stick with what we agreed upon with this gentleman, uh get his fence up like he supposedly was gonna do.
JR, are you able to check back into that, just to make sure that he's?
I can, yes, I'll have to refresh my memory, look, it happens very wild, but I do believe there was permanent plans for a fence that was on backorder.
Correct.
I can send a letter if you'd like, I remember it, so I can send something if you'd like.
Yep.
It should be followed up on, it's only right to the rest of businesses, um I didn't, I'm poor, I'm hard of hearing, what are the summer hours for the city now that was agreed upon?
Seven to?
Seven, so same as last year, so it would be um seven AM, seven AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Thursday, with a half hour lunch, and then Friday would be eight to noon.
Jim, did you get seven hours?
No, we were.
You worked the.
Five days.
Yeah, okay, I, I gotta apologize, I, I didn't hear it, and I, I just uh didn't remember what all happened uh last year on it. Um I'm certainly glad to hear about the farmer's market, uh I do hope, and I know you're getting the, the policy book together and stuff, but this time when we vote for somebody, let's interview them. Finally, last thing I'm gonna say on that, uh and I realize there's one other little touchy subject here that uh, no, we won't enter on that. Uh thank you for your time, uh and I realize it's early in the game here yet, but we're gonna have a wonderful daycare uptown, just to tell the sheriff's department, he's gonna have to have somebody sitting there, because half the people now don't stop on a damn stop sign.
Right.
And there's always bicycles, uh if you don't blame me, last year over at the Lutheran Church during the summer events, uh sure, I had a granddaughter work there, but there was sometimes forty bicycles there, and. The kids are really good, but they're, they're like kids, they don't all pay attention, so just alert our, our sheriff's department that I don't want anybody hurt, you know. It's probably not my business, I've learned the tool tomorrow, but I don't want anybody hurt, but uh it's a busy intersection. The little semis go through there or get up to it, and, and I understand they don't wanna take a stop, they do the rolling stop, but my God, we gotta watch out for the younger group, so uh thank you.
Anybody else? I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll be noted, seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.